Before we get started, I just want to recognize that two of our members are not here this evening due to medical issues. So just making sure we're part of our council base, so we certainly wish them the best as they go through. One other thing that I wanted to bring up is in their absence, I wanted to see what the council... The council's thought hard on blading the old business project for our next agenda. I know we just keep kicking it to the next meeting, but I don't know that we want to adopt our council policy with how all members present.
Yes.
If I don't have a motion to make that change the agenda, I'll say I... All right, moving on to the content agenda. I'm going to do your job. I go on.
Yes, the Labor A Town Council Meeting Minutes of April the 24th, 2023, regular meeting and work session.
Any questions? Do you have a motion to make about the second on paper today? All right, moving on to public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone down within the district. My current president, so share your comments on your concerns or wishes for the town. Are there any individuals here to make public comments? Any online?
Yeah.
All right, so what is the public comment section? Moving to presentations, this is an exciting time when we get to recognize our awesome staff here at the town of Elon. And each year we recognize individuals who have milestones at five, 10, 15, 20, and every five, all the way up through 100. And if you would like to say. And we're going to do those presentations. So each of the department chairs will present those awards to their team members and their co-owners. And we will have a celebration for our staff on Friday. So we'll start with administration.
It is my pleasure to present this to the Dian Diamon, our town clerk, for 20 years of service with the town of Elon. Dian came to us from three level, served as tax collector, is dealing with the cemetery class, and the vast array of responsibilities that come with being a town clerk, keeping us in line, keeping the council in line, and keeping us in good graces with the state of North Carolina with all the reports that have to be filed. So I think you're interested in hearing the certificate. Congratulations, and thank you for your service with town Diamon.
All right, next on the agenda is police.
Cedric King. This is for Cedric's five-year anniversary, and while it's a little misleading, he's only been with us five years, but he came with a lot of experience taking back to his time at Cassville County as a detention officer, serving there on the sheriff's office, and most recently, the university, where he was promoted to sergeant there. He came on board, we all knew Cedric very well. He had just posted the ranks quite quickly. He's our patrol lieutenant, and he really, I mean, I know that J.D.'s here and all, but he really runs, runs that vision. And J.D. gives him the latitude to do it. So I'm very proud of him, and we're so happy you started calling Elon home. I'll do my part. Okay. And we have a lot for Ed Peters. He's been here for 10 years, he's working for Patrol tonight in true fashion. Y'all missed our ceremony. He was, he received our Team Spirit Award this past year because of his ability to be so flexible. He's gone from state duty to government patrolship for the next month at least. He wanted to be here for 10 years, and I will tell you a little tidbit. Ed Peters is probably the first rookie we hired, and he was fully on when we hired him. And he has made a mockery of you because he's a perpetual rookie. He's just, he's driven and he loves what he does. And again, we're just proud of him. He's one of the ones that makes my job the least exciting. Congratulations, Ed.
That's public work. Thank you all so kindly for coming. You are welcome to stay if you enjoy free entertainment. We'd be truly welcome to you guys, we know you work hard during the day. So thank you. Okay, moving right along. We have our budget presentation for this year coming forward.
Evening, everybody. In your comments, you've got someone related to that 24th question, about my budget report. I gave you out the presentation document this evening. There's also the special unit, which is the actual budget, all the line item numbers, and I think just a couple other informational pieces that I included in the attachments for your reference as we go through this. I'm not going to read through the budget report I sent you, but I'll certainly answer any questions you may have as we wrap this up. So if you could, let me start that power before you. And if you can move along to our art. Working off the theme that we talked about during our budget retreat, this is the best thing in our home. If you want to be in our home, so if you go to the next slide, please. And it's hard to figure out where you're going unless you know where you've been. So we'll give you some background data that goes into how this budget came together. So the, one of the biggest pieces of news this year is completion of the county revaluation. We got new values second week in January that were about 62% higher than December 31st. We went from 556 million up to $920 million of taxable real estate. The revaluation and the tax rates also affect things such as personal property, vehicle taxes, and utility taxes. But I concentrated primarily on the real estate. Like I said, 565 to 920, there are some appeals. The number you will see in the budget for revenue from tax, property taxes is based on 912 million, because that 921 has come down a little bit as it due to appeals. Interestingly, tax exempt totals of real estate, so this is land that is not susceptible to the property taxes. Used to be about 40% of the value of Elon, it's now 42% of the value of Elon. So the non-taxable value is increasing faster than our taxable debt. Never a good situation. And lastly, based on the county information that was provided to us, a revenue neutral tax rate, meaning that we will raise essentially the same amount from property, real estate taxes or property taxes in FY '24 as we did in FY '23, that rate was 30.66 cents, as you see there in the last part. So we have, Elon's a pretty stable community. As you can see from this, this chart, our valuation going back, I apologize, the numbers on the bottom that are a little bit small to read, but certainly the graphic is representative. We have gone from, I believe it's about six and a half, or 650 million of value. We've gone, we've gone from 2016, our red rock values were pretty flat. It dropped a little bit in 2017, and it's gone back up to where it is now in about 560 million. And it started at about 550 million. So over the seven years, we've increased about $60 million. The blue bars, and you'll see these on a couple other charts, are inflation. And through most of that period, inflation's been relatively flat, 1%, 2%, a little bit more than 2%, a little less than that, until the last three years, where we have seen it go up as high as 8% two years ago. Last year was over 6%. Values have certainly not, during that period, values have not kept up with inflation, meaning that as budgets moved forward, we were losing purchasing power, if you will, from our taxable property. Cost of living, likewise. We have done traditionally anywhere from 1% to 2.5% cost of living increase for our staff. And you can see that the blue line, again, going back to 2016, with 1% up to 2.5%, back down to 2%. And the blue line shows what inflation has done. Those are the bars of the previous charts, and you can see that over the last two years, they have skyrocketed. And the orange line has gone up not nearly as much. Last year, in FY '23, we did a combination of cost of living increase of 2% and we gave everybody a bonus, a one-year bonus of 2%. That represented 4% cost of living for that year. And the proposed budget, we're proposing to make that 2% permanent. So it'll be the same as last year, and then a 3% on top of that. That big red blob in the middle is the gap between inflation and wages. As you can see, we have been falling short, keeping up with the cost of living on what we pay our employees. Next one, Diane. Deal rate, our tax rate versus inflation. Again, we've had the same tax rate, 45 cents since 2017. As the cost of goods, labor has increased, as we saw earlier, the value has not changed appreciably over that period of time. And the next one. This is what we have seen time and again, what we drive from taxes versus the inflationary impact. And we thought it would not be keeping up with the cost of living. Next one. So we had a budget retreat back in February, and what came out of that was where did we want to try and move Elon over the next year or so? So these are the goals and visions that you folks identified during that budget retreat. These are all things you've seen before. The one, three-year capital budget, the four- to six-year plan, obviously ladder truck kind of landed at the top of the list. Preparing for new police station, designing permitting. We have heard a lot of comment from the public over the last couple of years about the need to transit in Elon. That made the list. Talking about upgrading or replacing our public works facilities. We talked about skate park sidewalks that we hear from our residents routinely that we need additional sidewalks so people feel safe walking along our streets. More range and streetscape, our continued investment in our downtown to make it a more attractive place to do business and to invest money. Greenway connections and utilizing the land we have on 87th. That's 72 acres, 73 acres, as far as what we can do for it. Longer range, obviously building a police station. There's been discussion about the need for upgrades and expansion of our street fire stations, both of them additional sidewalks. How we address the space need for a town hall, which may be addressed by a new police station elsewhere. And obviously moving forward with the public works facilities and park development. This last fall, we also held a series of neighborhood meetings over three nights, over a couple of weeks. And these are the items that came out of that discussion. Transit, sidewalks, communications with our residents, connections amongst our residents, utilities, traffic, parking, police, safety, recreation facilities, quality of life, people advising on how we can manage our finances through borrowing. So all of these are things that are reflected in the capital plan that you laid out and became part of the bedroom goals and visions that we talked about at the retreat in February. So now we get to the overview of our upcoming budget. I always start with revenues, because revenues are what we, revenues are what drive a budget. This is what we know we have access to in order to decide how we would spend taxpayers' money. So non-tax revenues, these are things that are not property tax-based. Investments, two years ago, we were budgeting $5,000 for our investments. Interest rate was 0.01 for several years. This year, we should be hitting approximately $300,000 in revenue. Not knowing where the economy's going, we're budgeting $215,000 for investment revenue as a conservative measure. Selling plots at the cemetery, those revenues are coming in higher than we had budgeted. Sales tax revenue continues to increase, although not at the rate it was early on in the pandemic. I'm estimating that we will see, we will likely see about $3.9 million in total sales tax revenue, maybe 3.88, somewhere in that neck of the woods. As has been our practice, we take a conservative approach on budgeting for revenues. We have increased it from 3.4 million up to about 3.45 million. Sales tax revenues tend to be volatile, they change with the economy. I'm not an economist, I don't play one on TV, I'm not a Wall Street guy, but I listen to them, and I'm not finding a single one that says we're, we're having a great year coming up. They're all hedging their bets because everybody just really needs to know. Being conservative on revenues, if my mind makes sense. Revenue from the county for our SRO, that continues. Fund balance, we have a policy that says our fund balance should be about 40% of our general, our undesignated fund balance, unrestricted, should be about 40% of our general fund municipal budget. Not utilities, not water and sewer, but our general fund. We are currently over 100%, largely through, largely through additional revenues that have come in. And some cases, expenditures didn't take place or came in under budget. Last year, we used 500,000, or current year, we proposed to use $500,000 of that fund balance to subsidize municipal budget. I propose we do the same thing in the current year, or the upcoming year. Last year, we also decided we needed to bring that fund balance down to our target, about 40%. So from 8 million down to about 3.5 million. To do that, in the current budget, we use about, or we propose to use about a million dollars to start bringing that down. That million dollars is going strictly into capital projects and equipment that is a generational expense. I'll explain the caveat later, but for this coming year, I propose that we spend a little bit less than that, and we use a little bit more general fund revenue to supplement our capital budget. So I'm only, I propose to use about 823 million, or 823,000 for capital expenditures, which will, as we bring that number down each year, that will allow us to be replacing our capital budget, which is funded by unbalanced with tax revenue or regular revenues, so that we don't end up shooting ourselves in the foot some year we don't have that kind of money left to spend. We did some outside sources of funding. Twin Lakes, one of our partners, again, they're, it's a nonprofit, so they don't pay property tax, but they provide about $56,000 toward the town for fire department. Likewise, Elon University, they provide about $150,000 toward various programs within the town, police, fire, downtown, general government, like that. In addition, the university does partner with us on specific projects from time to time. They are proposing $170,000 to match our, help match our investment into the downtown plaza. So real estate taxes. As noted earlier, our current tax rate, 45 cents, has been in place since 2017. Yields about 2.5 million dollars in tax revenues for the current year, based on about $565 million taxable value. If we were to use that 912 million after some of the abatements at the existing 45 cent tax rate, that would bring about 4.1 million. Nobody, as I recall, thought that was a good idea. If we were to use that 2.54 million dollars as the target, the net, the no, the net revenue, or the zero net revenue tax rate would be, as I said earlier, 30.66 cents. Each penny is roughly $90,000 in real estate taxes. It also increases things like vehicle taxes, as I said, personal property. At the retreat, the board talked about a tax rate of 35 cents as a way to increase our ability to invest in Elon. And that 35 cents will yield almost 3.2 million of revenue through real estate taxes. For those who are busily working on their calculators, there's, there are some slight discrepancies in all this calculation, because I'm only using real estate, I'm not using personal property, I'm not using vehicles, and I'm not using utility taxes. So some of the numbers don't go around the right way until you add those other things in. 30.66 is the revenue neutral rate, and we're proposing to do over 35 cents. Fire district, two weeks ago, we held a public hearing on a post-fire district tax. It is currently at 12 cents. Again, the calculation's based on the value of 277 million, it was about $330,000. The new value under the revaluation is 420 million. And with the proposing a tax rate of, requesting tax rate of 0.8, 8.65 cents, that would raise it about 367,000, and increase about 30,000 over where we are today. The revenue neutral tax rate that the county estimated is 7.92. So it's a little bit above that. There was also a lot of calculations regarding different rates of inflation. And the 8.65 is, I think was your answer to revenue neutral plus inflation. So I touched on fund balance earlier about our policy, 40%. We are at, I was wrong, I said eight, it's nine. Million dollars in our undesignated fund balance, which should be about 3.8. It's at 8.2, where it's, we should be about 3.8. So we are way over on where our target is for our fund balance policy. Using our fund balance, spending it down gradually, responsibly, on some of those once-in-a-lifetime or generational-type investments will help us get to that goal of 40% and by supporting the investments that we need to make in our community. I don't want to get in the long range, have us supplementing our annual budget with large sums from our fund balance, because if we don't have that fund balance, we get thin up the hole. So my goal over the next several years will be to diminish what we're taking out of fund balance as we, as we kind of do that soft landing toward our 40%. And as, as we grow over the next several years in value, that will replace what we're using fund balance for, so that we end up with just a regular, in this budget, revenue solution. So we're taking that first step this year, shaving a couple hundred thousand dollars off what we used last year. So we looked at revenues, now expenditures. Where are we investing those revenues? So, we looked at revenues, now expenditures, where are we investing those revenues? So, revenues are up for the coming year as opposed to the current year for some, a couple major reasons. Personnel costs, we are in a competitive environment for wages and benefits. With the, the 3% quota, resurrecting the 2% bonus from last year, translates to 5% on wages. Insurances are up. We're projected to be up anyway, we may be able to drop that number a little bit, but Cigna, our carrier for health insurance, came in at 19%. We'll hopefully get that down to a 10% level and see what the other vendors we're talking to come in at. But together, those, we're looking at about a 10% increase in wages and benefits. That includes a new firefighter, includes a couple of new fire technicians. Operations, you know, the nuts and bolts of what we do other than personnel, again, that is up a little bit. And there's, there's, that 26% is somewhat deceiving because there are a couple of programs that came in. Transit, that's an operational cost for us, so that, that weighs in, is a, that's a big, relatively large enough to add into our own operations budget for a town our size. That's one of the items, and there are a couple of others along those lines that we've talked about that do carry that cost, rental space, rental for office space is another one. Contracted services, these are the services we hire out, hire professionals to assist us with things. We're dropping that a little bit. And capital costs, I will, I will take credit for a $3.4 million decrease in capital costs. Can you pat me on the back and I'll say thank you very much, however, most of that came from the fact that we appropriated the ARCA funds last year to offset yourself. That's an artificial high last year and artificial low this year, but I'll take that. So, anyway, that's, that's where we are on kind of the global expenditure list. So, here's what we're talking about for our capital budget. As we talked about, we are in the current budget, we have money to start building the plaza. We can talk about that a little bit later tonight. Next year's budget, we need to provide the furnishings for it, if you will, whether that's tables, lights, artwork, whatever we end up doing out there. So, there's $100,000 to better furnish our downtown and open a new plaza. Current year, we have $127,000 of funding to build a sidewalk on West Collinger. The balance of the project, we're proposing the budget in FY '24, about $153,000. The designs are all done, the permits are in hand, and we'll wait and do what we did for that after the person with this one here. $378,000 for restored rescue aid. I almost said that was about $320,000 for that. It's a vehicle that was proposed to have been traded in, we bought Engine 8. We decided to hang on to it, use that as, I won't say a train vehicle, but as a service vehicle for our volunteer, our qualified firefighters. It's got to the point where it isn't serviceable, so it's off, it's offline right now. And Chief Massey has a, has a different philosophy than previous chiefs of, rather than combining multiple uses of the single vehicles, so that Engine 8 is a, is a engine rescue vehicle. They pack all our rescue stuff on, we made it an engine, it's got water, doesn't carry as much water as engines used to, can carry as much rescue equipment as a rescue vehicle does. So, it, it does both jobs pretty good, doesn't do either job really, really well. What Chief would like to do is take that existing rescue aid cabin, turn it into a 25-year vehicle, a top-to-bottom recap, and put it back out in service as a frontline rescue vehicle. He prefers to see vehicles do what they're designed to do, not combine and do multiple things. We have about $290,000 in recreation apartment for capital investments. Maybe opportunities for grants for, for, not an insignificant portion of that. About 250 of that would go towards skate park, which came up time and again during our community meetings and our retreat. And so, that's, that's in the fund balance column, if you will, that totals 823,000. From general fund, for the first time, we're actually budgeting money to build sidewalks, budgeting money to mark up roads. We've always relied on Powell Bill. And Powell Bill is a great source of funding for us through the state and it will replace our, each of our 20-year roads in 40 years. So, we are, every year, we take a step forward, repave a little bit of road, we're losing ground. So, that is an area that you will see grow over the next several years as we put additional funding into that, so that we can try and catch up on some of our road projects and road needs and keep them healthy. When you, when you let a road decay so far, you end up rebuilding it. If you can do a repairing every 10 years, every 15 years, you extend that 20-year life of the road, maybe 50, 60 years. We'll save it in the long run, but it will cost money today. Two new cruisers for the police department, they didn't buy any this past year or this current year. The PD has a capital equipment purchase for computers for some cameras, computers for the cruisers, and starting work on architectural design for a new police station. So, that 347 is about our capital budget for upcoming year. So, these are the major changes, we talked about some help pipeline positions, improvements, vehicles and PD firefighters. I'm not going to read through that in this, you can see it, we've talked about most of them, we've already hit them. So, that, that's, that's addressing the issues, if anyone will, the next slide. That previous list, it's on the items that we have identified both through our retreat, through our capital budget retreat in the fall, through our neighborhood meetings in the fall, adjusting short-term space deficiency that we're facing over the next several years, employee benefits and new comparable communities, transit, Williamson Street Scape. And that's not on this, that should be on the alert, anybody. And next. I'm glad we take any questions from the board, or if you want to do that, you might wait for the public hearing later.
I just have a question, you kind of answered it already, but I'm assuming that the appeal time is now over, or is it still?
I think the actual time of trial has ended.
Probably.
Last Friday, but they won't have final appeal adjudicated till probably July.
And that could, how much could you say do it impact that?
As I recall, the last report I saw from them had us, yeah, started at 9:20, I think we were at 9:17, 9:16, 5. Worst case, the county gave us was 8:89. I wasn't as conservative as they were. But we won't, we won't go further.
I did have one question, obviously, sales tax is based on population.
Yes, the distribution.
So, with the, I guess the census last, 2020.
Yep.
Is that factored in, that population is with the board, could be factored in as well?
That's my ability, yeah. We, Elon grew over the last decade, we did grow as fast as the rest of the county. Our share of sales tax receipts dropped. I want to say 4.6 to 3.9% campaign tax receipts. That's based on the 3.9%. We dropped to 3.8. It would come in, you know, the actual notes would be lower than what I think they might be. I think it'll still be fine with where I've got a budget, I don't, we'd lose that much in receipts, due to population issues.
I guess my question is, is if, let's say that after all the appeals come through and it does drop to 8:89, how does that impact the budget? I mean, obviously, we're going to be under what we need to be, and how, what's the plan to address that?
We'd be to monitor. And I, I think I've got them on my computer. The, the amount that we would lose in revenue, I think we were at 3.20,000, 3.2 million I had us at, and dropped us to, let's see, 3.1, 3.05, so $100,000 difference. We are arguably $350,000 below on sales tax potential. We are arguably $70,000 plus under on interest income potential. So, we would certainly monitor, I don't think it would call for any drastic cuts on our part if that, if that value drops to worst-case scenario. It would still be okay, beyond the other resources that I've been conservative on.
Well, I know it was a lot of work between you and the chief budget lead on, and I know Mark's not here, but thank you for your work and thanks to Mark for his. If there are no other questions, we will move ahead to the public hearing. We will now open the public hearing regarding state's fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget. Any online?
No, there's none.
I guess we'll close the public hearing. All right. Moving on to new business, consider Ben Ward's West Lebanon parking expansion.
So, West Lebanon parking expansion is one of the projects that we can talk about. We have done several projects already to extend it, and on the railroad side, we have possibly 82 spaces. The final two phases would add Visual 72 and take parking nearly to Church Street. It was in the day about how close we'd actually get to the distance, near a little bit. For this, last of the task year, we get to finish the design for those parking spaces and all construction documents. And we have to bid, and we have the sort of like BitTap, it's attached, you know, for, for bits of the project. Holland's construction was a little bitter, had to figure out a lot of dollars. Our plan had been to bid the whole thing and then actually construct using what we had budgeted for, which was under $63,000. As we talked about it, and we've done a little bit of hands-on research, and I won't say it's perfectly scientific, we had our police parking systems, and I go down West Lebanon more in the 23D period than I have in here. At all times of day, right? How many, how many parking spaces? During that, during that week period, there were never fewer than five, 10 spaces. So, it really got me questioning whether we needed to make that investment now. We got the plans, we can design it, we have permits, we have rooms with railroads. We didn't, but did it any time. Has that changed? Yes, might be over for us next year and the year after. But it seemed like we were solving a perceived problem that doesn't really exist at this point. And until there's new development in downtown, it didn't seem like that problem's going to be a whole lot worse than it is today. Since I wrote all this, Jill and I have been discussing planning that or parking areas. And we started a conversation with somebody about helping us adjust the parking issue. It might go across the $63,000. So, that's, that's a kind of back birth thing right now, I don't know if that influences what we pick up tonight. Talked to staff and we agreed that this didn't seem to be the best investment at this point. And so, the recommendation is that do not do this project in that we find it worth it.
Clarifying question, most of the ones that Paul's wrote on their approval.
I don't know the answer to that, my guess is that there may be, it might be in a few couple of years, we can check that and, and do what we need to do, extend that. Pay for it. So, I mean, it's, it's all, we have all the documentation, all of the, all approvals. My guess is we can use, possibly easily extend it. Can we help you? We went down the hallway to tell him.
And this includes the two phases, right?
Yeah, it's all, we both, last two phases, yes, all we have to do.
Do you have the, when, who, there now that white voting on the former prostate, where's to do? Do they have a timeline? That's all of the data.
For the future. I guess, that would have been a driver for the initial parking. Our understanding from time to time is that it's not going to be happening at any time in the future.
Because my thought was, was, I really don't want to, we're going to a plaza. We're going to do a way up to the street escape.
Yep.
And relatively soon, I don't want to help with instructions of the street. And so, anything that's done prior to it, will just help with that. Look, can you elaborate on the two phases, like if we just did one and two phases, what would that look like?
We didn't have it broken out in concrete phases. I can't say, you know, phase one was 35, phase two was 35. Phase one was $163,000. And because there are some project-specific items in that initial construction process, we would give that 25 spaces to that $163,000. That we put in strange in place that would be used by the second phase, so that, that gets more parking spaces on the second.
Was this project, would it do any, like, did it allow that for this?
It's been budgeted. That FY '22 budget, that was $63,000, was that correct here? Do you recall?
I don't recall, but I think it was last year.
FY '22.
How much power will this be? And then this little question, I remember when I was on the top, you were getting that thing about it. You know, if we had a hard budget to make our downtown accessible, right, that's why we won't be using.
It's like a 400 feet of rural something more. 230 feet of in-town site.
I mean, I think that even 20 had these thoughts of being nice. However, when you attend the downtown meetings and you see what could happen with parking, where we can add parking in other areas in the future, in my opinion, it makes more sense to invest this money elsewhere so that we can look at that more, that broader plan, that in my opinion has more of a strategy behind it versus just roads and parking.
That I, in my opinion, has more of a strategy behind it versus just roads and parking spots where we have the land to do it. I mean, I was here during the block party and people were parking down there, but it still wasn't full. And that was the most people that we've had in town for a really long time. And I think that we need to also, you know, continue those discussions with the university about utilization of some of their parking areas. On evenings and weekends when there are classes and session large in happening. Because they sit empty in the evenings and all summer long. And a lot of our big events are in the summer. So, I just think that there are other avenues that we could figure additional parking.
I, I, I just remind, remind you to know that we knew in advance that this, these last portions were gonna be the most expensive per parking space cost that we would look at. And if the standard is showing us that it's not necessarily practical right now, I would have a tendency to accept that.
Yeah, and I tend to agree with you, Mary, that, um, here's a fund that's a parking space on weekends and in the summer. And I think I did get opportunity to partner with the university. I, they leased that from the, uh, the railroad, that property for the parking spaces. Or is that just something town basically thinking this parking space is a lot? On West Lebanon? Yeah.
We're not.
He's, he's allowed on ladies, ladies, so ladies. So, they're responsible for that, so that's an opportunity, I think, that, uh, it's not a costly. As you said, we will apply, last thing we want is, is the park. But I think, as you said, as you, you win this, there are vacant spaces there. If we could use that space effectively. I think that's a solution. Yeah, I don't think anybody will spend forty, hundred dollars just parking space in this time to reuse. If your point, I mean, is that sidewalks are the thing you keep hearing about. How much, how much, I don't create a lot of sidewalk space to, to town, two hundred and thirty feet, probably, yeah, that's not a lot.
Do you know the distance, um, to relaxation to, I guess, where the next sidewalk would be?
I, I don't know the distance. Uh, the estimate, just, I can do the seven thousand feet. Yes, that's about a seven hundred thousand dollar project.
This.
Uh, yeah. That, that's a D O T road, so that would be in town design, so we got seven hundred bucks to fly. So, uh, perhaps we just get four hundred feet. Well, we don't have a lot of it. We got a hundred sixty by it. I actually agree with some town manager to affirm that, you know, I think we still have an opportunity later on. Granted, it's maybe more expensive than being able to do it, but I'd say that, uh, use for as much as I would do it. It's a benefit.
Well, then we have to also use it as sometimes it's the right to, a business does, uh, that, uh, not the parking space. Okay, we have this property, but these parking spaces, um, instead of kind of having whatever.
That could be a hundred and a half, and there's a lot of, of course, and those whole space to count for there is.
Okay. Another thought, we need to start shut down college. Our original approval was actually at parking spots along that route. But that never happened. Was there a reason why we didn't add?
It was shut, it was shut down when I got here, so I don't know.
No, it was supposed to be the right-hand side. So, from the church entrance on college down. And then we even discussed the next block, striking it for parking spot.
Between Holt and.
Right hand, so if you were leaving here, right, as you go down Miami, then if you made a left on college, like, the road was still open along the right-hand side. Do you know why we never?
How would you access that, your partner on the right side, but unless you're using church parking lot as a circle?
Well, even if we didn't do that law, but the next law is very wide as well.
Right now, the, uh, that block is used temporarily during the primary market, because we close the road down, and use it as a, like, parking, and it seems to work pretty well.
Oh, the next block, yeah?
Uh, no.
Oh, I'm talking about the next block, yeah. If that's a lot of law.
I mean, we can certainly take both of that with, with PD and fire to see what the language look like, what we have in the parking. It's just in here, I read that. I agree with you, James, we use it for, 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 for temporary parking. But it's, it's, it's a long, practical, we like it's.
Just was kind of lowish. It's actually less of a success. The parking is actually wrong, and maybe have much more, um, than having.
Yeah, you know, I'm talking about from Holt to Lee and then even Lee to Manning.
Would it be kind of a lot of stuffs?
I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, when the, when the barrier went up, it was also just to be temporary. Let's try it out, let's see what happens. Let's do temporary parking spots, test it, and then that part never happened, and then it happened.
Well, maybe barriers on both sides, and I don't know why that happened. I mean, I can, I can, I can hear the conversation, we can, you know, lock it off and wait and use that for parking. Why back here, we need a barrier of defense?
No, no. So, from the church parking lot, right? So, that's still beyond our second barrier, all the way down. So, from there, down to Holt.
Right, okay.
And then from Holt to Lee, and then, we never discussed Lee too many, but college is wider than parking down, our, our town streets. If they're not an opportunity, I guess is my question.
I would say, yes, there is an opportunity. Um, like, Chief Massey's already looking at Holt because of the farmer's market. Whether that's conducive to emergency access, if we have parking on one side, we start having a look at, uh, hopefully in the event handy. And see if, to see if having parking in there is really, really, it can't, right, access.
Are you talking about permanent parking or are you talking about temporary parking? I think, I think the permanent parking. My status is the student.
Uh, again, if we get two hour parking, then we need to be part of our control.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But you're right, we, we know that all, their parking is in their driveway, so what happened, you get a parking spot from that. So, they might, they are created, they are on the street. We know that two hour parking, it's enough time for a student to go to class, we search for response.
Well, there are sessions that, like, input and input from the, um, merchants that we should be exploring paying for parking. You know, at least in the closest one, that's it, for all three spots you want, down Lebanon, but if you want to park in front of a business or right next to a business, pay for it. Not.
I would say is that, I just, I was attracted to the idea of the idea of temporary more than the permanent. Only because that is where we, that's, that post, it really was impressive for this level. And, and then we're not fighting it all. That's all I'm just trying to get, it sounds like right now, we're not fighting it.
But in my opinion, if it's safe enough for temporary, it should be safe enough for every day.
Yeah, we can argue that bigger, but I, I guess, I don't know, like, just, yeah, it's, it's gonna be there.
See, for two hours.
That costs nothing, so I mean, just try, try some, us if there's an opportunity. I mean.
I just, I think, if you, if you.
What?
I remember practically, it was seven from the church exit to the.
There.
There.
Yeah, true, yeah.
Maybe that's my fault, I was, in order to do that, you have to go to the church parking lot, circle around. I don't think you want to distract people, have this private property. I don't think churches want that, so I think you create another problem.
You're saying, you're saying about one-way street then?
Well, one-way street.
I'm not even saying that, I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm saying the original plan was to use parallel parking on that side of the street behind the temporary plaza. Is it supposed to be over test?
Man, there, there was, it went behind, it was on the way. That trip, that trip, that trip, that trip, it was on the way, and then they all, you know, it was. Yeah, so maybe that's the part that they gave you, man. So, that's why I'm here and saying something. I think, I think, I think that's.
I mean, is that something that the downtown plan is looking at, is our traffic patterns, do they do that? I mean, being.
Yeah.
They, they.
No. All right, so where, where are we on this? Uh.
Looking for, you, you about the board this.
I would move that we do not accept the dibs or do not, um, project.
So, I have a motion to reject the biz for parking extension on myself in a second.
Can I ask a question for a second? So, we're going to, to take that out, please, right? And then I have to, don't, we're not, we're not. Okay. We're just, we're going, just, not, that's gonna be the E R case.
If we do, if we change anything in the discussion, then, uh.
I'll, I'll say.
All in favor, Scott?
All right.
Motion carries something up. Uh, moving on to consider any comments in very starting time. Always curious, gee. More than ask for a better segue.
So, thank you for asking me, I appreciate the, uh, earlier transmission from employees. What I'm here today to ask you to consider is increasing the amount of parking fines. We haven't had a change in the actual monetary fines or penalties since, like, it was, uh, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, where it went from ten dollars to twenty-five dollars. And you should have in your package the language, I am, I'm proposing to increase resets to forty dollars on the initial. Um, the initial fine, after fifteen days, that going up another twenty-five dollars to twenty-four to sixty-five. And then after forty days, it went up to a hundred dollars, which is another thirty-five. Uh, currently, it's twenty-five for the original penalty, it only goes up ten dollars to thirty-five dollars after fifteen days. And it goes up to seventy-five dollars after twenty-five days. And, um, pulling some of the data that we have, over half of parking fines in two thousand twenty-one were for one-hour and two-hour violations, that doesn't count. Other things on, and he'd have those for the hourly rates. Um, and then in two thousand twenty-five, two-thirds were over the time on the one-hour. So, the fines that we have right now obviously aren't making, it's not incentive for folks to eat to time period, uh, over time range. University charges, I think, last, actually fifty dollars per ticket. Uh, so this is still under what's, what, any money, whether it's students parking downtown, um, faculty, it's still under that, that penalty that they would receive at the university.
I don't remember you just told us, how many are repeat offenders, how much is, is just worth of a dollar?
I don't have those numbers, I can get those, um, but I think even in fact, this is a lot of repeat offenders that are paying online. Uh, so we, I think the, the showing aspect that we, we start doing really has improved, they are paying more timely. Um, but, but a lot of it is still letting those penalties, uh, how long? And, and I don't have the exactors, but we have a lot, a lot of repeat offenders.
Cause there's no increase because you're a repeat offender.
No, there's no, there's no language that allows us to, 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 or offenders, or, or, or. I would, I would guess like twenty-five percent were repeat offenders, twenty-five. And the reason why I know it is because I see the name, and I'm like, oh boy, I recognize that name, I mean, one, once I got it out of my head. I mean, she, she bowed up three hundred dollars, it doesn't matter to her, so it's just.
So, I guess my question is, why would we not do the fifty dollars for some university?
I for it, it's the same thing.
I mean, I mean, if you want to stop an activity you don't want to encourage, there's a threshold everyone has. If you're ten dollars, I, I would not let a ten dollar ticket. As you said, there's people, someone else is, other right there, they're fine, and so they don't care.
And, I mean, those are just numbers I, because obviously the board has instructions to choose what makes sense, to put it down.
More questions, because, do you know that the university charges, like, fees and stuff like that?
As, as far as I'm aware, and, and the graduation is dependent on, I mean, those basics.
The, the repeaters, I mean, it's the same thing. So, you can have people that, you can take away. You know, so, I mean, you can take everybody in that class.
So, we don't have language to allow repeat offender fines, or is it state that allows to have repeating?
I don't do this, say, do take stuff, I'll, I'll do some additional research, I don't think, I don't think it's ready to do. Um, and, and what I will get tomorrow, but I can get a harder, and that's next for you.
I think about the number of calls I get about parking tickets. And it's very easy to be like, it's twenty-five dollars, she's gonna pay the ticket. It is a much harder conversation, and granted, I've had this conversation, that you just told me you parked for two and a half hours in a one-hour parking spot. And you want me to do something about that first one, I, because it's a wall. The second one, you just told me you parked there for two and a half hours, and you're complaining about getting a ticket. That's, you're making, you know, it's twenty-five dollars. Uh, I, I don't want to complicate it, but I wonder if there maybe is an opportunity for, like, first event, be a lesser round, but then after that, it's, then it's like, I don't.
You know, I, I don't agree, I think, if you say, this is, if, if most of the players are university students, they're accustomed to the fifty-dollar. So, this is a problem, you know, our resident, who's not related to university, that's unfortunate. Maybe they're, they're just, I'm, to explain that. I guess my question, I was gonna ask, so what is the process now, if someone parks in an eight parking space? What happens?
So, our parking enforcement office just has a system, they go out pretty second times. Um, they go out and because we don't have automated systems, we give about fifteen to twenty minutes of our time. So, even if you're, you know, hour and five minutes over, or their watches isn't their watch, just because on Wednesdays, they flip on to tables. Their watches aren't synchronized, it's not the penalty or, uh.
So it's only twenty hours waiting for you guys to get tickets on.
We, they are actively Monday through Friday from, uh, twelve forty, seven thirty to three thirty.
After that, it's pretty good.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't really enforce downtown after three thirty. Unless an officer sees something illegal or something. I feel, they, they would do handicap things like that, but we don't, generally don't.
Right. So if we did, you can't really enforce it. I mean, it's like, it's one of the parking regulations. You busy as hell with probably dinner. So that's, takes away that whether it's summer or fall, school's in or out. So...
Is there something that states actually that has, uh, the amount of days that a fine has to be paid? Like, say it's fifteen to fifteen forty-five.
The language in the statute is that it, it basically gives us the power, or you give all the power to make rules, uh, regarding parking rules and regulations for our dealers.
Yeah, I do think we should build up on the first time. I don't know because of both the, 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 the students are the repeat offenders. So the one time, so to get the students understanding, to get their first ticket, let's say they don't pay it in five days. Right? Then, so from twenty-five, let's just say that it's twenty-five days, it doubles five days to fifty. Now we're still getting appointment calls. It's going to the students. Um, and I really was a fan of repeat offenders, so that makes sense since you can't, um, recognize, uh, or have the technology to do it right now. At that time, but is there a way to shorten the days? It's almost fifteen days, you can walk time.
My, my, my opinion is that she's done, um, given us a presentation, and it seems fair, and we're only talking about ten-dollar difference. My sense is, is that from an inflation standpoint, everything else, I don't think anyone would be totally shocked at it. And again, if we're moving in a direction where we may have a different parking, or other things like that, this would just be a stopgap right now. I would think it would be, because it does sound unfair and parking rates are pretty low right now.
I just don't think, I don't think, however much it costs, it's not gonna solve the problem. And we have problems. You know, we have the problem that people parking there for too long. We have that, right? Um, that's why we have a parking problem, is because people park in short-term parking longer than they should. Um, but we do have the fact that the kind of fine, which I think is rare, a no limit parking spot for a parking spot maybe at the church when that's open. Um, that it might be limited to only parking in a one or two hour parking spot. I don't know. But then on the other side, McGurk, all those stores and restaurants, they have free parking for their customers. Um...
You got a study. Just to show that they did this study not that long ago, and they were literally coming lots, coming to come spots.
Right.
And we're not hitting that, that maximum. So we're not hitting like, we're, we're just always over. So, um, my sense is, is what she's, what she's suggesting is really helpful, but it won't solve the problem. We, you know, here we're never gonna solve the problem because some people don't mind paying for parking.
Um, I, do you think it would be worthwhile to post the form? Like, where do we have, you know, the limits of parking to actually post?
I don't think it would hurt. I, I don't think that it's been posted anywhere, but.
Yeah.
Obviously others in this ticket.
Yeah.
So those repeat offenders often...
Yeah, I just wonder if maybe that's, you know, one ticket maybe your parents aren't gonna hear, but when you see that it's forty dollars and this is my four spot.
There ain't change, yeah. First time, yeah. How did you know there's a parking limit? There's signs.
There's signs.
This is all, all, every parking space, let's be full of, no, by sections, yeah.
But I'm saying in case of signs, like, in a, in a, in a, maybe that is an option. Um...
Yeah, that's something that says will tow. I'm not gonna talk there. And just, and just like the talking lot in between, uh, tangent and subway, you know, has, this is part for this, will tow. It's around, so they're getting a big semester, tow like three students, and, and it's not. Because, I mean, it says it, and it scares you, and it tastes like, yeah, they actually do.
Well, I think we have some things to come up with in terms of improving parking situation that doesn't cost us money. Um, so, I guess, what do you all think of scheduling a public hearing for May twenty-second on increasing the parking? Oh, parking fines, sorry. I don't think we need to make a motion, do we? Just go to a public hearing?
Just one public hearing, just about parking. It's, it's a public hearing on changing the ordinance.
Yes, the ordinance changes you have to.
So you'd have to do the ones.
Yeah.
Who changes the law? Do you wanna go with forty or go with fifty? I mean, I'll go fifty. I think we're treating everybody equally. If you're joining the university, you're joining, it's being equal. So there's no, no question about it. Why is yours less than theirs or more, which is why.
I, I do have some ways, but then I also think of like our residents who don't have a parent who's gonna pay it for them. And they're all, and, you know, they're all, all money coming in into a twelve-hundred-dollar, you know, social security check. And again, forty to fifty dollars isn't much difference.
Fifty just sounds worse.
Fifty does sound worse. Um...
I, the, the chief came up with that and said she was open, uh, but my sense is, is that this is a good next step. That's my counter argument, just that I agree, but it's, it's different. In other words, that they are treated, they're like, we don't get to send them the letters to any campus graduate if they don't pay.
It's something that the university and, uh, every day.
So, I mean, so the sense is not necessarily we all, happens and handles, but I don't think that will really change anyone's idea that you're not really going to do that.
Do you have another question? Whether you're getting paid, um, how often are, after fifteen days, set the second fee settlement? And then how often do you get to the third fee?
A lot. I mean, I, I don't have the data, but, um, quite, quite a few of them are waiting after that fifteen days. They're, they're not waiting as long as before, because again, they're afraid they're gonna get their car towed. We've been to a couple. I think that, that kind of sent a message, but they're still waiting fifteen, forty-five days. Mom and dad will call. You know, four months away or four months after pay, or they get the letter. So we have quite a few that aren't paying it at, within that first fifteen days.
I think a lot of those were at the air market place. These seem to be treated differently at the university, though, is they, they come in and, before they've got the spot, they're nowhere to communicate. So now the, the parking lot's closed, there's people, and then there's, I know they may have, I mean, forty, twenty-five, whatever, paid it for them. It was a lot of money, it's something you're gonna pay right now, so. So that's the worries. That, those are the only people I'm most concerned.
I, I think on a campus that's six thousand spaces, air markets certainly work for the university, find places.
I, I still, we don't have any one they ask for.
I would not, I would not worry about that. If they have, their bosses can get that parking.
Okay.
But...
I'm definitely fine with that here. That's the first one. They haven't stood their penalties for after fifteen days until forty-five days, because again, most of these people are students that are holding up and doing this. And if we want, make a, make them stop to sit, sit five to fifteen days, if they are waiting second to third air runs, that has to be, that also compromises the residency, so you have forty-dollar fine. But it's not gonna break down on the first time, and we don't have anything to do with it if it repeated.
And if, if I may, also, I was gonna say, and again, it's not a hard factual written anywhere, but our parking is also pretty scarce for the lunch hour. Because again, we know that the roof is missing, we know that the tangent, so they, they generally don't stay hard and fast to that, that, that time when we're during lunch hour. So I think they use very common stance, and they try to look at the fear of the law, instead of the letter of the law.
But, um, I know this is not what we're proposing, but I would like to see if we have any option around not enforcing parking during a certain time in the summer, and then maybe the month of December. Just because it's an opportunity for our local residents to really support the businesses when there's six thousand less people in town. I think that that would entice them to want to come downtown and stay and, you know, and instead of rushing out of wherever they are, maybe they go and they go to another business and then another business.
Maybe that's why.
Like, like I said, like beach towns, they have free parking in the winter.
As long as you restrict it from overnight parking. Say somewhere where parking is, in the van, on the street.
Do they limit overnight parking there?
Not generally. Um, just because if somebody has too much to drink at the roof or tangent or whatever, they, they, by seven-thirty in the morning, they give them an hour. If they're not parked, they start, um, ticketing them, but we don't, we don't tow for being parked all there all day or anything like that.
But I think I, you know, the signage still would stay up. You know, typically that still occurs, is that the signage still stays up, but you just don't enforce it during that time, and maybe it's in our town newsletter, so.
Parking holiday.
It's not gonna be out there on like, I live with my family dot com, and you know, like, you could come to the town if you want, all of a sudden, I live for free. Um, it's, it's, I don't know. I just think that it would be really nice for residents. I walk, you walk, but not everybody can walk. It's not paid for everybody. It's not said for you walk downtown. Um, I just, I just think that it would be a really nice gesture for our residents and for the businesses to maybe have additional support when they're not giving a lot. So, could we just look at it, maybe?
I don't know. I don't know if our purpose is to, to work more out for certain years.
Who's the thought that you can understand?
Oh, okay. I was worried about, about that.
Well, I think we can go after the public hearing, and we went, went till after anyway, so if we have a lot of people here who want to insist that it be fifty, then we will get fifty. If we have a lot of people here against any increase, then we have a conversation, which is different. Okay?
Alright. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Alright. Uh, let us see, consider bids for construction of downtown Plaza.
This is, um, another project that we've been talking about for a while. And that is taking the, the end of West College and, which we cordoned off, which used it as a venue, and actually turned it into a formal, uh, plaza vending spot for the community. We've done a, we did a preliminary, uh, design through an architect, uh, Nancy Architects drawings. We've gone construction design and modified the visual aspects of the brick plaza. The shape of it's changed a little bit. Uh, so they added features like a sidewalk along the side that has been added, and so that there's continuity about, you might walk through the plaza. We went out to bid. Uh, we did a pre-bid meeting. We had three contractors show up for the pre-bid. Two of them said they were definitely gonna bid on it. One was questioning it, and the bids came in, we had one, one bidder show up. We had another one who could not get subcontractors, pricing subcontractors, so they didn't bring it in. Uh, fortunately, the bid amount was under the threshold where you needed to have three qualified bidders. So the bid came at four hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars for the destruction of that downtown plaza. We have about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars between our... We have about three hundred seventy thousand dollars between our, our budget for the current year and commitment from the university. We asked the vendor if there was any cost savings that they could see in our design. They said, well, if you give her the brick, that would save a lot of money. So we, we were opting not to give her the brick. So you have bid for four hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred, and if we are to move forward on that, obviously, we need to bridge the gap. We went back in small contingency for unknown items might, might pop up through construction, and then construction administration for our, our engineer. That four hundred thirty-five changes it up to, I think it's, um, four hundred seventy. So about a hundred thousand dollars behind what we need to build that plaza starting late summer. As it so happens, we have a previous project with a budget of about a hundred sixty-three thousand. Um, that if you are, if you award the bid and prior to signing any of your contracts, we do act with the budget amendment to cover the change in, the change in costs. So our recommendation is that we follow the project, and we'll give the budget amendment to you in two weeks to work in that direction.
Would that preclude asking the university to hold up some of that, because I know that there was some, um, strings attached.
It, it, it would, no, it does not preclude that. I, in learning the university to this and just verifying the way they've offered it to provide, a hundred seventy, if you didn't keep the responsible idea asked about, whether they'd be interested in helping contribute toward the overage. They left that as open questions, if there were, they had input into design changes, and at this point, there are design changes. And I reply back, and I might not come back after that. Obviously, we do the budget amendment, we'll do that in two weeks, what, what happens between now and then, whatever you're looking at.
So we're looking at four thirty-five plus a hundred thousand for furnishings?
That, that would be an extra plus a hundred thousand, yes. I'll say the hundred thousand is an estimate, actually, it's half the estimate.
Those, um, heavy tables are like, what, forty thousand or something?
The ones with the umbrellas on them are thirty each, I think.
Yeah.
There are cheaper ones than that, but they're still not expensive.
There's always an opportunity to look for grant funding and fundraising through our downtown corporation.
And, and through our business community, who might want to choose to sponsor something, name it.
Yo, absolutely. I think this is a great opportunity for, so, Mark had talked about it, and Wes presented it, to be higher than it was. It's a great opportunity for downtown board to finally, like, first project, find businesses to sponsor a whole table umbrella, thirty thousand dollars. To really grow like a kind of podcast. I agree, that's a lot of pressure. But we're gonna build it. We, I, I, we, we wanna do it correctly, right? We don't, I, I don't wanna have a holdup chair.
Well, you know, and we've got plastic coated picnic tables out there. We have wooden picnic tables, and we'll go this way and that way, that we're costing repairing. Probably not, you know, again, this is, as I said, probably not a tax permission we wanna put out there. Do we need to put out thirty, thirty-five thousand dollar wrought iron tables? Probably not. But that, that level of, uh, public furnishing is not what you buy for your backyard either. It will probably, you might get it less expensive than that, but it might be twenty thousand. And twenty-five thousand, we consider out of the bargain compared to thirties, but still the expensive, expensive furnishing.
You know, when they can look at furnishings, but like, if we had art pieces, I think what they presented it to us, that had two light columns in the front. Work with art committee, and we have a general board who has worked for, who was on the western side of art committee. And to get a piece of art, a structured piece of art, they said, no, that would cost thirty, sixty thousand dollars to have, you know, some of them to look at. No way it's that much. So not just for people to sit in, but for just to bring in art, everything involved with it. So we're looking, I mean, I thought we had budgeted five hundred thousand dollars for the project, that's what we anticipated, the downtown project.
We, we need budget, we need budget before. Of that, uh, thirty thousand dollars came from the university to do the design work. The initial hundred seventy, we split up, our two hundred. So we had, we had three hundred seventy available for construction. We did not budget the time of construction administration.
Did university, uh, also the university for the plaza, did they give you this part number, or did they take, yeah, we're fifty, fifty?
When, in the initial discussions, they were going to spend the cost with this, may I say, there's a hundred thousand, there's no cost.
You can say there, back to you.
And, and that conversation has started. I, you know, I, I, I let them know what the new numbers were, they responded, and I replied back, but I'm not sure.
So this contractor, they're asking, you gotta let her know the answer soon, but I just wanted to ask you on that. Even though it's, because it's a little budget, does that mean that it'll actually get started soon? Or will it be, they could be accepting, and then they'll say, see you sooner?
The, the initial bid document was that they were to start work by July one, and all of the contractors said that, that's jacked, and pricing up. We did an amendment to release them from that July first deadline. I believe their bid, um, little construction is starting in July, impact the farmer's market, and you know?
Not really. Not because of the parking lot.
It could impact maybe Smith Farms moving into another location, because of where they're located. We'll work around it.
I, I, the board idea from Ali Williams is not having to start today. My recollection popped, and it was going to be ten of August, in September, before they could start. I have talked to the school about construction timeframe, they had no concern about construction during that period.
Did they take how long it would take us for it to finish?
It's not in the bid summary that I have from Ali Williams, uh, I, I don't know offhand.
Do, and why are people paying more?
Uh, they didn't?
They have enough work.
They, it's different, so they, they didn't.
We know one bidder could not get work, get priced from subcontractor. And so they didn't wanna bid on something, they didn't know what, what the cost, what the cost. I think we have a lot of options here, if we just basically scrap it, we try to reinforce. I mean, we bought the bid again, but I don't know if they'd be able to, or say that solution, do us, the money, the work, the best, the parking. And better serve, better serve the plaza, and to your point, we get creative now about how we're gonna merge, using the debt not being, seeing the logical weight rates on us. Maybe other nonprofits in our town, they might be willing to participate.
Yeah, see, I'm a target, I'm a, I see an element.
Yeah, you know, we, we have, we have corporations in towns that, that want to help, we have corporations that are neighboring communities that might wanna help.
They seem to, the, the Ali Williams group, they seem to give this contractor.
Yeah, they know the contractor, so.
I, I just feel like we're waiting this longer.
So what are you looking for, I'm just saying. I, I'm looking for a vote to award the bid to, um, to bar construction, for price of four hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. And, uh, we'll, we'll put together the, the, I'll have you sign the contract, and it'll take a little time to get that contract in place. And I'll be back to you with the vote amendment before I sign it.
I'm in, I'm gonna accept the bid.
And we actually have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you guys, fill that plaza.
We'll get going.
We've talked about it long enough, let's do it. All right, moving on to reports, we'll start with the town manager.
Welcome to the plaza, we have music, uh, in town this Friday night, Impulsive Tattoo is playing. Who happens to be a band head, choir downtown champion, so, um, they'll be there from six to eight. Thursday's obviously the farmer's market, um, that's in the afternoon, and six-thirty on Thursday at Elon Community Church is the third of our three downtown matchup planned public meetings. If you have an opportunity to be a part of them, this would be a great opportunity to hear what's being talked about, and like your input. I think, no, I, I will say, uh, Elon is an, is an interesting position when it comes to its employees. We have some people that work here for an awful long time, or a wonderful long time, I should say. A lot of communities don't see that long generally. People come, people go, and certainly, we, we, we've had some people come, some people go. We have a lot of people who work here a long time, dedicated employees who are here to serve our residents, and, um, that's a, I won't say feature of small towns, but it's a great testament to this place, that we have people who've worked here for thirty-five years, forty years, thirty years. And people who've worked here five years who are looking at ten, fifteen more to go, so, um, once I think, we have a, we have a great talented pool of employees who appreciate working here, and I think appreciate the support, we, we have those. I would be grateful.
Well, I just wanted to reiterate that, uh, the farmer's market, um, I, I, this is anecdotal, but I've seen a very different, I don't know, curve. We're seeing a lot more inconsistent customers coming through the farmer's market the whole time. And at the beginning, it's really the kind of, uh, the wildest part, because that's why I started talking about the possibility of having some, some reparking involved. As well, it's, it's because the college is where the young farmers themselves are actually, in college. And, uh, so my sense is that, that's a, to discuss that is really interesting, and I think the other part of it is that you see firemen over there, you see city employees over there, you see people, so there's, there's opportunities that may not present themselves in this different kind of place, and, and so I, I just hope, hoping forward, and I just wanna say to Jill and Sarah, that you guys are doing fantastic job of getting things out, and having things ready. Also, I just wanted to say that the green committee, uh, the sustainability committee is, is really starting to hone in on what, how they like to model, the kinds of stuff they wanna present to, to us, and, uh, and for, for future reference, and, uh, and I just feel good about that. I still feel that the committee itself is still small, we need to get some more people on it. So I'm hoping that we can continue to recruit those kinds of things as well. The people that are on it are very, they're very serious, and they're really looking, we, at, at the, I'll just, I'll kind of introduce the third thing, that's these downtown meetings. I want to say, I'm impressed, I just want to say I'm, I'm impressed, because I went through that last group. Um, and it was nothing like this. There seems to be some real explanation and real logic this tries to go into, you know, for the town, and for hopefully what the town can look like, um, it's kind of exciting. And, uh, and with that, um, we had one of our sustainability committee vendors there, and they were really looking at it from a whole green perspective, you know, what kinds of things could we recommend, or talk about, help, and in the future, and so, um, so I'm just glad that these kinds of things are all starting to come together. And I feel real good about that, but, I think that's pretty much it for me.
Yeah, I want to think Rich and, and the rest committee, they worked on the budget, a lot of work, and I look forward to, to, hopefully, can meet that budget. And revenue seems all our expenses, but also I wanna tell, um, those Diane and crew that put together the volunteer appreciation launch this week. It was, it was a good turnout, um, it's always impressive with the people who volunteer hours, they show up, and, uh, we even have someone who's been with us forty-two years, service, you know, that's just a hundred, I have so many to do, that's a, you know, kudos to them, for, and those people who volunteer, the volunteers, you know, they continue to cheer us in, passion, and most of us are, um, for Elon, it's a good place.
Yeah, I enjoyed the, uh, volunteer dinner last night, I think it was my first one since the elected, close to elected in the nineteen.
We haven't had any since July.
But it was just really nice to chat with the volunteers at the table. I know we see them in here, uh, when they get presented to us, but it was just really nice to talk to them all, so. People from the sustainability committee, and it's just really nice to hear what they're doing, why they're doing it. You don't volunteer unless you're passionate about the town, and so it was just really nice interview to be around. Jill and I today went to join the Dallas Chamber, or the Dallas Development Committee, uh, we were there with, uh, Mr. Gately, Mr. Pauls. Carter was there, uh, representatives for San Francisco, and, uh, Congresswoman Bucchi. And so it was nice to hear they're gonna state, kind of, from the state and federal level, um, but also what Calamance is doing. And it is true, you know, when we invest in our town, and so that we, our town to succeed and do well, it drives the business. Um, and I, I hope what, what we're getting with the, some of the new elements has been the presentation. We haven't seen growth since two thousand sixteen, seventeen, uh, sustainable work, and so now, you know, we're getting ready to put in some new commercial spaces and have more, uh, residents, and so I think with us investing in our town, and this is gonna make you a place where people want to build and save, um, which is a big thing. And I think this will be a place where people want to work and raise their family, and we are demonstrating that. But I thought it's like, I appreciate all you guys, I'll get it. But Rich, thanks for all your, what you did, it was a lot of back and forth, and figuring it out, lots of talks, and four, uh, different budgets, and, so, we do appreciate it. Chief and Kathy, we know who, we'll pat the back for the three point nine million. You got it, you got it, so, but we, we appreciate that, all that you.
I enjoyed the volunteer dinner last evening. I have missed the music to dine to for a few weekends, because we've been at dance things. So we have another dance thing, two of them on Friday night, so I'm gonna miss one of my favorite bands, because I love to see those things, um, with this band. Um, but, yeah, I mean, I think that the block party, and again, I've been back since the block party, but what I saw that evening was just so cool, and it brought people downtown that, I mean, I kept commenting to Jill, I think I said to you two, I've never seen people before. And that was exciting, to see people that aren't just the same people that are there. We love to see those people every week too, but it was, it was neat to see new people that we hadn't seen before, and it was just a really fun vibe downtown, and so hopefully that just continues. So that was great. Um, I'm trying to, there was something else I was gonna say, but I don't remember what it was now, so I guess it came until the twenty-second. So, do you have a question to adjourn?
I'll wait for the, the, the adjournment.
Have a second?
I'll make a second, then we'll move to the chair tonight as well.
I'll make a second, that'll be with him to adjourn tonight as well. Uh, I'll make the last.
I'll put a paper say on it. In the adjourn.